Yeah.
What's the other camera?
Tonight's meeting will be called on order at 6:00 p.m. Now say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all and for all. Thank you very much. Again, we're in a different setting and a different atmosphere with the, because of the coronavirus, so. Will the clerk please take the roll call?
Okay, attendance here at the library, Mayor Blaisbrook?
Here.
Attending electronically, Commissioner Sherwood?
Here.
Commissioner Fowler?
Here.
Commissioner Woodward?
I'll let you come up here.
Here.
Commissioner Hargis?
Here.
Thank you. At this point in the meeting, I would like to have Danny Bave come up. Up to the front.
It looks like social distancing.
Yes, social distancing, yes. A lot happened two or three weeks ago, and that's when Danny retired. But I didn't want to go without acknowledging what Danny has given to the city of Sullivan. Twenty-four years, one month show up, one month shy of 25 years, correct?
Correct.
Started out in the street department and then went to the gas department. It's because of men like Dan giving to the city of Sullivan, helping the city of Sullivan, and producing for the city of Sullivan. This man has been the epitome of what a citizen would want to see in the way of a worker for the city of Sullivan. I want to thank you. I would shake your hand, but that's not the end thing to do now. But I would like to acknowledge and thank you for all that you have done for the city of Sullivan, and I hope that your retirement is as much fun as you seem to be having already.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The city's been good to me.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Danny. Thank you, sir.
I wouldn't shake.
We can't shake anymore.
That it?
That's it, Danny. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Yes, you too. Danny, you have a report that we need to give?
Yes, just wanted to give everyone in the public and the council as well an update on where we stand with the relief fund that was created about 11 days ago through the help of the Sullivan Area Ministerial Association. Hopefully, everybody knows about this, but this is a fund that was created 11 days ago with a goal of $20,000 to raise money for those most in need in our area, in the Sullivan and surrounding areas, Bethany, Lovington. And I'm happy to report that donations as of about two hours ago just topped $20,000 in the fund. We still anticipate more incoming checks from that. And just wanted to let everybody know, now the issue becomes distribution and getting the help to the people that need it, and your urge to contact the Sullivan Area Ministerial Association. They have a website, as well as Pastor Dave Dolan. You can contact him through his church, or Pastor Grant Wayne through First Christian. And if you have any other questions about it that you don't see covered in the newspaper, there was an article in last week's paper about this, the local paper, News Progress. Just call us at the city building. We can give you more information. That's 728-4383. And ask for me, Dan Flatt, and I'll be happy to guide you in the right direction.
And people still can give to it, even though $20,000 was reaped.
Yeah, that was the original goal, hoping we'd break through it, and we broke through it in 11 days. So we're grateful to everybody that's donated so far and thankful for those that will continue to do so in the future. No gift is too small or too large.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We have no comments from the public, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. We're now going to move tonight to the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda contains two items: approval of the minutes of the special meeting held March 18, 2020, at the previous regular meeting held March 23, 2020, and the approval of claims except those in TIF 4 funds. I need a motion to accept the consent agenda.
This is Peggy Hargis.
Okay, Peggy, go ahead.
Go ahead. I would like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
I need a second.
Abby Sherwood, second.
Thank you, Abby Sherwood. And any discussion? If none, will the clerk please take the vote?
Commissioner Hargis?
Yes.
Commissioner Sherwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Woodward?
Here.
Mayor Blaisbrook?
Yes. Now we'll have the approval of TIF 4 claims. With Commissioner Fowler abstaining, I need a motion to approve the TIF 4 claims.
Commissioner Sherwood? Chuck, go ahead. Motion to approve the TIF 4 claims.
I need a second.
This is Peggy Hargis. I'll second.
Discussion? If none, will the clerk please take the vote?
Commissioner Woodward?
Yes.
Commissioner Hargis?
Yes.
Commissioner Sherwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Abstaining.
Mayor Blaisbrook?
Yes. Now we'll have the report of the commissioners. Commissioner Sherwood, please.
Okay, this is Abby Sherwood. First, I want to start with what has been going on at the park with the warmer weather. They have been mowing, cleaning up, continuing spring maintenance. The tide has come. Sunny weather's taken down last week by our park employees in preparation for what potentially could come. Also, there's been some work at Taylor Park that's been working on cleaning it up as well. I do want to remind everybody, for the public, that the city hall lobby is closed. If you do need a ten year bill, expect the lobby. We recommend going over to First Community Bank, right across the street, and they will provide a cashier's check for you. Please don't put cash in the drop off. Get the cashier check. There's no fee. It's waived for the citizens of our community. We give that cashier's check if you need to do it that way. If not, we highly recommend the online program. Makes super easy, quick for all customers, really easy to use if you don't want to leave your house and have no contact. I also want to take a second on a good note to recognize the DSW of Sullivan. They recently donated $1,000 for the park rec program this year, but we just wanted to make sure they got their recognition for that donation and tell them thank you. It is appreciated. That is a free program for citizens of our community, and it is a huge, huge subsidy sum, so we wanted to thank you for the donation. And I also wanted to discuss and possibly take action on the appointment of Ed Moody for the park superintendent. So I'd like to read my motion. I make a motion to approve John Edward Moody as the superintendent of the city of Sullivan Park Department with an effective date of April 13, 2020.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Sherwood. I need a second.
This is Commissioner Fowler. I'd like to second that motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Fowler. Any discussion?
I just want to say that, oh, this is Abby Sherwood. I just want to say that Ed has stepped into the role since January. He's been a supervisor before. When Herb left, Ed stepped into the role. The last four months, he's been filling in that role, and he's been doing wonderful jobs. The staff has been doing great, so I just wanted to recognize his efforts and thank him for all the hard work he's been doing the last four months.
Any other discussion? Would the clerk please take the roll?
Commissioner Sherwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Woodward?
Yes.
Commissioner Hargis?
Yes.
Mayor Blaisbrook?
Yes. Anything else, Commissioner Sherwood?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fowler?
Yes, this is Commissioner Fowler. April monthly report, starting March 24 through today, April 13. The past two weeks, I've been working with my new informant on budget items. It's a relatively new experience for him, so we have had many telephone conversations, going over numerous budget line items. He also has been communicating with Sarah over the phone, get it current, but Sarah was mainly concerned with three line items: labor, materials supplies, and transformers. My main concern is outside contractors, which is considered the labor, and Caleb's main concern is another bucket truck. Let's discuss bucket trucks to begin with. When I started as commissioner almost a year ago, we had three bucket trucks ranging from 40 feet to 55 foot. They were all around 16 years old. These trucks need to be on 10-year rotation. Anyone that thinks differently is kidding themselves. These trucks cost an average of $250,000 apiece. We just purchased a new 40 footer last year. Since our fleet is so old and have not been on rotation, we're needing another new one this year. This is going to be very hard on the budget. Not sure what the answer is at this time, and I'll try to keep everyone posted as we work through these difficult times with the pandemic we're all dealing with at the moment. As far as the labor category goes, this is use of outside contractors. I'm a firm believer that the city should use as little outside help as possible. The use of city employees is always a cheaper route for taxpayers than contractors. Unfortunately, I may have to bite the bullet on this concern for another year, maybe two. Big D was already contracted to do some large projects last year before I came on board, so we have to fill those, and I don't foresee any large projects in the near future. But until we get another journeyman on there, we will get the mercy of outside contractors for the next couple of years. As far as materials and supplies, though, we were over in that category last year and will need to raise that number for fiscal year 2021. April 10, around 11:00 p.m., we have a power outage in the South Maine, South Washington area of town. I called Caleb on Saturday morning. He said it affected Circuit 2 and was an underground fault. The crew was out most of the night and had to lay cable on top of the ground temporarily to get people's power back on. Today, I talked with Caleb this morning, and he said the fault will have to be dug up and repaired, fix the problem permanently. He also wants to investigate the possibility of installing a loop system in the subdivision so that when something like this occurs, again, there will be an alternative power source to rely on. This would cut the downtime in half for our power customers. He will give me a quote on the cost to install or add to our existing, our already existing system. Then, this afternoon, Caleb contacted me again and wanted me to meet this afternoon and go over some problem areas. We met and walked down the area that was affected by the power outage. This area of town was subdivided during the early to late 70s, so most of the electrical system is 50 years old. Caleb wanted to discuss upgrading that part of town and put in all new primary cable and new power mounted transformers and locate everything next to the road instead of everyone's backyard. He also suggested that we spend a few extra dollars and loop everything so we have a redundant feed to rely on in the future. Today, we're digging up the previous mayor of Sullivan's backyard. She's been very gracious about the whole thing, but I hate having to do this to her backyard. And to make matters worse, it ended up being about six foot deep. The city department was good enough to open the electric department their track hole. I was present when they finally located the cable, and Caleb then wanted me to meet him up around the square and look at some problems facing the electric department behind the thrift store in the back alley. We're trying to eliminate the power pole and go to an underground cable system with a pad mounted transformer. Caleb pointed out several problems that are going to possibly hold up progress on that project. And that's all I have.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Thank you, Commissioner Fowler. Commissioner Woodward?
This is Commissioner Woodward. The only thing I have is the guys have been doing maintenance, steel plan. We hired some two summer help kids. They've been doing the painting and everything, the railings. That was marked as a deficiency in the ocean inspection, and they'll be doing some other light maintenance work and stuff like that, summer help kids will be. That's all I got.
Any questions? Thank you, Commissioner Woodward. Commissioner Hargis? Commissioner Hargis? Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Absolutely.
I feel like an advertisement.
What a scare it is, Peggy.
I'm sorry. It needs to do that in the one happens. Okay, this is, maybe I'll start over. This is Commissioner Hargis, and the gentleman has been working at resurfacing our lot more. They're completing more parts of that. The COVID-19 has halted most of our projects, but we are continuing to fill hot holes and picking up yard debris. They did dig a ditch for the new lights for Jefferson Street for our electric department, and I also have a couple of motions I would like to make. The first one is that I hereby move the city council approved change order number one on the Jefferson Street project contract in the amount of $8,730. May I have a second, please?
We've had a motion. Go ahead. Chuck, are you seconding?
Yes.
All right, go ahead.
Chuck, that...
Chuck is seconding. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm just curious, Peggy, what this covers.
Dave, you wanted to explain? That would be easier for you to do that, if you don't mind, please.
Certainly. This is the electric addition that was made to the project to allow the decorative streetlights to be installed that were not originally included in the project. This was brought to our attention by the previous electric superintendent, and we added that so that we could have the decorative light, additional lighting on that street. That street is very dark. I think Commissioner Woodward can speak to that. He lives in that, obviously, in that descending, the west end of that street, that block, and that's why this was added. That was the line work, or the ditch that Peggy, Commissioner Hargis, just mentioned a few minutes ago, and this was for the pouring of the four concrete foundation bases for those streetlights. That is not inclusive of the cost of the lights themselves. Those are on order and are not a part of the contract of the project itself.
Okay. So is the electrical work going to be part of the contract?
No, our guys who put the, your electric men put the conduit in, installed that, oh, probably 10 days ago.
Yes.
The electric department did that.
Yes.
Okay, so no outside contractor plan at all?
No, sir. No, sir.
Our guys, I mean, the street department dug the ditch for it, so no, there should be no outside, as far as that goes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, there was, I mean, everybody was on hands, getting down there, working on that, and made short time of it. They had everything ready to go and didn't stop the work or anything like that. It worked out well, so, and they beat the rain also, so. Any other discussion? If none, will the clerk please take the vote?
Commissioner Hargis?
Yes.
Commissioner Woodward?
Yes.
Commissioner Sherwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Mayor Blaisbrook?
Yes. You got another one, Peggy?
Yes, I do, Keith. I hereby move the council authorized Milano and Grunlow engineers to complete an application for the Illinois Department of Transportation's Highway Safety Improvement Program, grant funding for safety improvements to Patterson Road. May I have a second, please?
We have a motion.
Second.
Thank you. And this was Mr. Fowler, or Chuck?
Commissioner Fowler, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Fowler.
Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, could you explain that a little bit more, give me what's going on on the front and by the line?
Peggy, do you mind?
I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
I was contacted by Lee Beckman with Milano and Grunlow. This is an application process that we've been through before, a couple of years since I came on board with the city about three years ago, and we, in those instances, it was applied for, for the Eden Street intersection with Hamilton and the Water Street intersection with Hamilton because of the difficulties we have with particularly grain trucks and/or semis on those two intersections. We were not successful either time in getting those particular applications funded. The reason this was brought back to our attention by the engineers was Patterson Road has long been considered an area of danger because of pedestrian traffic and bicycle traffic. It has a lot of curves and winding nature to it. It's not in the greatest of shape. It gets a tremendous amount of traffic, particularly feeding the rural subdivisions to the South Bradford Hills and the Country Club area. It's a lot of traffic. It's difficult to keep speed down on stretches of that road. And the thought is, from Lee, the reason he communicated this to us, the engineers, was there is a lot of talk that part of the next stage of the stimulus financing from the federal and the state government may well be put to infrastructure projects like this, and the thinking is that there's a higher probability this one is going to be, this grant program will be funded at a much higher level than it has in the past. There's no guarantee that we will win this grant funding application, never is, but if we're ever going to get one, a substantial amount of money on a 75% or 80% basis to do some work, and it could be either Patterson or the Eden Street or the Water Street intersections, it wouldn't just have to be at Patterson. Now's the time that we may be able to see it. That new stimulus package has not yet passed. Obviously, it hasn't passed the General Assembly here in the state because they're not in session, but it has not passed Congress yet from the federal standpoint. That was the reason. A lot of this grant application work has been done previously. It should be a relatively low cost to us, much better chance of success.
Yeah, a lot of people, a lot of people don't, do not realize that that is a city road now, Patterson Street. It's not, it's not the county that has that. That is a city street, so.
Yeah, it goes clear to the intersection, across intersection road that goes out to Bradford Hills, and then ultimately, the goal would be probably to get some kind of a multi-use path in that area that would allow, at the very least, foot traffic, but hopefully, maybe also bicycle traffic, to get things other than motor vehicles off of that road. That is a very, very dangerous road. We get a lot of foot and bike traffic coming from people jogging or walking, even from those south subdivisions exercising. So that's an area that for some years, the councils had their eye on, but it's a, it's a big dollar fix. It's not a cheap project.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be nice.
Just a thought, especially with attracting homeowners to the new, what it could, should be Burdick's space soon, you know, we had that extra path for walking or bikes, and that would be fairly more attractive to that area because even now, coming out of my subdivision, it's so dangerous to go on a bike up those hills because people go so fast over them. Peggy, you can attest to that as well?
I will attest to how fast they drive by my house, and I will not walk on Patterson Road. I will go up the back door, but I won't go out the street.
This is Dan again. Whenever the Burdick project first started, the thinking was ultimately, if Mr. Burdick develops the ground on the west side of Patterson toward the acreage that the city owns on the west end of that tract bordering Route 32, that there would be a tremendous increase in foot and bike traffic if that were developed, you know, residentially over the next five, 10, 20 years. So probably any path system would take back the Route 32 back to the west as well if the funding was sufficient. But it is a big project. Probably requires some land acquisition.
Yeah, it's, it's...
This is Commissioner.
Yeah, go ahead, Peggy.
This is Commissioner Hargis, and we are still planning to put another speed limit sign, reduce speed limit sign on Patterson. I just wanted to throw that in there. Yeah, still in our books to do. We were waiting for the ground to get softer to take care of it, and then other things came up. But anyway, we will get that sign in.
Okay, see, we have a motion on the floor. We have a second. We have any other discussion? If none, will the clerk please take the vote?
Commissioner Hargis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Sherwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Woodward?
Yes.
Mayor Blaisbrook?
Yes. I'd like to discuss the, some of the things that we've been doing at the city building, but Blake and Lori have been working on grants for businesses in the town. I think they've had five or seven submit applications, and of that, we believe only one would qualify. It is, the difficulty is that they have made it so hard for businesses to get funding. I would love to see them streamline the application so that our small businesses can get the money that they need to keep open. Dan and I, Abby and I, other commissioners have been all talking about how we're going to get this city moving after this pandemic scare, whatever you want to call it, has subsided. We need to get the city back to working. We have, I have been talking to other mayors in the area and out of the area on what's going on, and none of them have been positive. All of them are... All of them are worried, and worried mad on what is going to happen to their city and, and what is going to happen in the future from the state of Illinois. We, we do know this. We have to be positive. And we do know that we have to be, have a plan going to get the city moving after everything is called off. So that's one of the things that we're going to be working on with economic development people and Abby and some other people on what we need to be doing in, in the future here. At this time, I would like to have a discussion and action on the appointment of Kyler Lane as the cemetery superintendent. I move the City Council approve my appointment of Kyler Lane as superintendent, foreman of the City of Sullivan, pardon? Of the City of Sullivan Cemetery Department with an effective date of April 13, 2020. May I please have a second?
Can I meet Commissioner Hargis? No.
Go ahead.
This is Commissioner Whitbeck.
Discussion? I want to tell, tell you that I think that we're getting a great addition to the city. That someone that has a lot of ambition and a lot of love for his work, not only at the cemetery, but all around the town. He has done a tremendous job and, and he has stepped up and met the challenges that we have. If we have no further discussion, will the clerk please take the vote?
Mayor Blaisbrook?
Yes.
Commissioner Sherwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Woodward?
Yes.
Commissioner Hargis?
Yes.
At this time, I'd also like to appoint Tyler Grayman to the zoning board of appeals, filling the vacancy of Bill Prox for a five-year term running May 1st to 2020 to April 30th, 2025. I hereby move the City, City of Sullivan, I hereby move the City Council approve my appointment of Tyler Grayman to the zoning board of appeals for a five-year term commencing May 1st, 2010, and ending May, April 30th, 2025. May I please have a second?
This is Commissioner Hargis, second?
We have a, a second and a discussion. If none, please take the roll call.
Mayor Blaisbrook?
Yes.
Commissioner Hargis?
Yes.
Commissioner Sherwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Woodward?
Yes.
Thank you very much for your support on that. At this time, we'll go to new and unfinished business, and we will discuss the actions regarding the extension of the ordinance declaring emergencies.
As Commissioner Woodward, I'd like to make a motion to extend the ordinance number 20-3 implementing declaration of emergency. I hereby move the council waive formal reading and extend the effective date of ordinance number 20-3, which implemented, implemented the mayor's March 2020 declaration of emergency to the date of the next city council meeting on April 27, 2020.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner.
Commissioner Fowler.
Commissioner Fowler seconded. Thank you. Discussion? It hasn't been used very much. What?
That's probably what you'd like to see, how much you've been using it.
I, I wouldn't think that we've used it. Everything that we've done, we've had to go through every commissioner, so it hasn't been used at, at all, in, to my thinking. But I know that there are some little things that we've had to use it on. I think that one of the things that I, I fail to mention, the other thing in talking to some of the mayors, they are also keeping track of their expenses for the, getting ready for this and what they have to do and things like that, that each, each commissioner should be checking with their superintendent to keep track of time and material and things like that. So that, that was one of the reasons for, for doing this, was to get the reimbursement from FEMA. So Dan, what have you got?
Yeah, the reason for this is the original ordinance 20-3 that was passed by the council at the previous meeting was necessary to ratify effectively Mayor Blaisbrook's declaration of emergency. The law basically says that every time the council meets going forward, this ordinance has to be reconstituted, reextended every time you, the council meets either a regular or special meeting. And until such time as the mayor lifts the emergency declaration order. I would anticipate that he would not vacate the emergency order until such time as the governor changes the stay-at-home order or lifts the state emergency. The minute you stop your emergency declaration, your funding reimbursement stops at that moment. So there may well be expense well past the time of the public seeing an actual emergency characteristics around town or more back to normal. But we may still have expense carried over that the emergency declaration period would extend through. And that's the reason. So you'll see this repeatedly over the course of the next couple of meetings, at the least, in my guess. That's my guess.
Correct. Any, anybody else? Will the clerk please take the vote?
Commissioner Woodward?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Sherwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Hargis?
Yes.
Mayor Blaisbrook?
Yes. We will now be going into closed session this evening to discuss the setting of the price for the sale of property owned by the City of Sullivan and to discuss pending litigation. I move to go into closed session. I ask for a motion.
This is Commissioner Sherwood. I make a motion to go into closed session.
A motion.
This is Commissioner Hargis, I second it.
Will the clerk please take the vote?
Commissioner Sherwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Hargis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Woodward?
Yes.
Mayor Blaisbrook?
Yes. Well, we'll be adjourned into closed session at 6:38. The next scheduled regular meeting will be held Monday, April 27, 2020, at 6:00 PM at the library. I would imagine we would probably be being, using the same format that we have today in that we'll still be under the order of the, the governor. So thank you very much for your patience. And I hope all the commissioners stay online. Don't hang up. We have to go into closed session. Thank you very much.